Call that to order, Lisa. Roll call again, please.
Ann Brady.
Here.
Lisa Housh.
Here.
Andrew Key.
Here.
Andrew Schaefer.
Here.
Trey Vermeat.
Here.
Matthew Belbrand.
Here.
Tyson Taddy.
Here.
Thank you. Lisa, would you do our invocation for us, please?
Certainly. Our heavenly Father, we come before Thee to give Thee thanks for all that we have, for this country that we live in. We're grateful for the town of Rangeland and the people that reside here. We ask You, Father, to help us to be wise and to make good choices and to help this town become more, I guess, diversified and be able to take care of whatever issues are before us this night, and we say it's in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Peter, would you leave us this pledge, please?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the minutes of the meetings on February 13, 2018. Ever had a chance to look at those? If there's any additions or corrections? If not, we have motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Tyson. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Second by Matt. Further discussion? Those in favor signify stating aye.
Aye.
Repose, same sign. Motion passes. Petitions and public input. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council at this time? Okay? If you come up to the podium and state your name and...
My name is Linda Berry. I'm here to speak on behalf of our police department and the chaos that has occurred in recent weeks. I grew up here since 1952, so I've been here a while. I did leave for a while, but I came back. I love this town. My parents loved this town. My family loves this town. We've all managed to make livings here, even through the swamps and the booms and the busts. And what I heard about what happened and how our police department was addressed by a group of people who were unhappy and had complaints, but police weren't allowed to respond, I have a question. Wouldn't it have been just as easy to have told them about the complaint process and who to go to if they were coming to you as a councilperson? To me, that seems logical, rather than having a public spectacle. They were ridiculed. There's a possibility that some could leave. And that would be really sad, because there's none of them that have done anything illegal. That's been investigated. If they left, that would leave positions open. And as people put in applications for those positions, I, as a nurse, always ask, why did that former person leave? Now, you can't always tell that, but in the torrent of all of this, and everyone in town knowing why they would have left, would you come here if you were an officer? Would you bring your family here? Would you feel safe? Would you feel that they were safe? In your positions, do you feel safe? Do you feel empowered to tell other departments how to run their department? Now, some of you do, especially in this case, the police department. I wouldn't expect you to try to tell the gas department how much pressure can go through a gas line of any certain connection, or to tell the people that do the accounts payable and so forth how to do their books, or any other department. So if you looked at it in that direction, what you did was focus on one group and attack them. And this doesn't include Lisa, I might say.
I wasn't here, actually.
Lisa was not here, I don't believe this would have happened, had she been here. I believe young blood, it came overcame with power. Power can be good, and power can go to your head. And I want you all to remember that in your futures. Do you have a complaint department in your business? Do you have a business that has employees that might need a complaint department? These are all things that all businesses have to consider. The city has a complaint setup, and it should have been used. And you, as the counselor, not the parliament, should have directed them to the complaint department and helped them to get into that system. I'm ashamed, I'm truly ashamed of what you did. And it's embarrassing to have you as our councilperson, all except Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with public input for the council at this time? Now, we're going to move on to changes to the agenda. Peter?
Yeah, we got two items. Item E was published after the initial publishing date last week for the Fair Districts Initiative. I think Andy's going to address that later on. And we also added a grant that we are looking at submitting for improvement, a Main Street improvement. We'll need the council to recommend that Andy Key sign off as our representative to AGNC for that project.
Okay. And can you tell me where you want to change as far as the new business? What you want to go first, second? How you want that to go?
We could probably knock out the first two items and then move on to Julie Drake, if you'd like to.
So you want to go through the first two? You want to go directly to Julie? We can put the last two at the very end.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Let's just drop A and B down, the last two. We'll start with C when we get to new business. We don't have a public hearing. Do we have any committee or board meetings we need to address?
No.
The supervisors' reports are attached. You're going to wait to do your, at the last also, for the town manager report. So that moves us down to new business. And Julie Drake.
All right. Well, I'm Julie Drake. I have met very few of you. In fact, I don't think I've met any of the council. But thank you to Peter for helping me get on the agenda and those few people in the audience. But I am a relatively new public health director for the county, so my charge is the entire county's health. And I started in August, and I live, actually, in Meeker. Work at the city hall, upstairs in the city hall is where my primary offices, but I come to Rangeland as well. And I just wanted a moment to, first of all, thank you for your service as town councilman. I know it's, sometimes it's a thankless job, but you wouldn't be here if you didn't care about people. And I care about people as well, so we have something in common. And I'd like to just educate you a little bit today and throw out a potential idea for making Rangeland better, making it more attractive to people coming to Rangeland, and that is by improving the health of our community. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit, to the public as well as the council, to educate you about vaping. And vaping is kind of a new thing for me. I have never vaped. I have never smoked a cigarette, and I will not. But I had to do a little bit of research here, because I've learned a lot, and I want to impart that to you. And so the name of my presentation is the famous vapor caper. Vaping is something that you'll find out why I call it a caper. A lot of individuals are duped into thinking some things that are not quite correct. But we'll talk about talking about smoking. Smoking combust is called combustible tobacco. Because it is lit, there's fire, you use a lighter for it. It's the leading cause of premature preventable death in the country. And everyone in this room is impacted by smoking, whether you smoke, a family member smokes, or not. We are impacted by smoking, because it is one of the leading cause drivers at any healthcare office, hospital, or clinic. If you have high, you complain about your hospital bill, there's some of that, you can directly link back to smoking and impact on our society from that. So what is vape? Vape is a verb, and I'll teach you about it, but this is not a how-to presentation. I'm not going to teach you how to vape. So I just wanted to put that out there. Vape is the act of inhaling and exhaling an aerosol, also called e-juice, which contains nicotine flavoring and additives from electronic cigarettes. When people exhale the aerosol, aerosol is in the form of a big puffy cloud. I'm going to be using some words tonight that are all synonymous. You'll hear me talk about vapor and aerosol. For this discussion, we will consider them to be the same. Actual scientific definition, they're slightly different, but in a vaping discussion, they're used synonymously. Sigalike is also another term for electronic cigarettes. E-cigarette, or ENDS, Electronic Nicotine Delivery System. So if you read an article, it talks about ENDS, that acronym, that's what that stands for. Vape pin, vapor, e-hooka, or vaporizer. So I might use any of those terms tonight, but they're all related to electronic cigarettes and nicotine delivery. So this is a picture right here. This is actually a vape, a vaping bar, tobacco bar, somewhere in the metro area there. But this is what it looks like when somebody is vaping, okay? This individual here is using a large electronic device, and he has probably learned how to really inhale a ton, and so when he exhales, it makes this huge cloud. To an untrained eye, vaping looks exactly like smoking, but it is not smoke, it is vapor, it's water vapor, and there's additives and chemicals to it. So I wanted to at least show you that. It's, and we'll go into it. You probably possibly have seen somebody vaping and did not realize it, because it does look so familiar. Here are what e-cigarettes, or ENDS, or vape pins look like. They're very techie. And in fact, I went to the town building, I bought one tonight. Cost me $8. This is $8, $9, I think this is a disposable one. And I'll pass it around, and you can look at it, because I think you should kind of see how it's packaged, how it's marketed, read the back. You can pass it here, it's the public ones to see it. They're welcome too, as well. But they look a lot like a pin or a stylus that you might use for a computer laptop. Very techie, usually really bright colors, those sorts of things. But show you the ones in the middle there, look very, very similar to a cigarette. Very, very similar. Easily confused. This is another type of vaporizer. It's called a tank. And tanks are where you would buy this device, and then you would buy nicotine e-juice that you, in a bottle, that you would put into this device, and it has a battery, and it will provide vapor when you inhale on it. But I just want to point out how techie that looks, you know, bright colors, has some kind of computerish looking to it there. This is not by accident. They're made appealing for a reason. Those things sell. This is a picture of a tank that I bought over in Meeker at one of the community stores there, and I believe it's sold here in Rangeland as well. It's called Space Jam. Again, bright colors, very fancy looking, appealing to teens particularly. Teens have cell phones, teens have Fitbits, teens have all these techie things. These are very techie, and they're very cool in certain crowds. Now, this is a picture of e-juice. Comes in a variety, I think there's the last, the State Department of Health told me there's around 100 different flavors on the market in Colorado. So there's just tons of flavors, so it has a flavoring to it. And you'll notice this that I purchased has another flavoring. This right here, I'll show you, there's one here, tobacco flavor, blueberry flavor, apple, strawberry, mocha, very appealing sounding. And that juice has nicotine in it. So I wanted to explain that. And so how it works, it's nicotine juice, then it is vaporized, people breathe it into their lungs, and you get a nicotine bit. Okay? Now, the, why am I concerned? You've probably heard about e-cigarettes as being an effective way to, for somebody to, cessation product, to help them quit cigarettes. You've possibly heard in the media that it is a wonderful alternative, that there's no harm related to it, and I'm here to tell you more of the science on that. So first of all, talking about our lungs. We all are born with these wonderful structures that the good Lord made, our lungs, that are designed so incredibly efficient to exchange room air. Room air is nitrogen, oxygen, a little bit of carbon dioxide, a little bit of argon. There could be a little bit of particulates in the air, but it is room air. That was what we were designed to exchange, in and out of our lungs, nothing else. So cigarette smoke, chemicals, those sorts of things, anything besides room air that goes in our lungs is going to be harmful. We know that. Science knows that. It is harmful, has dramatic health, it is going to, it's going to impact your health adversely if you're breathing something besides room air. So, in this discussion, it's vaporized cigarettes. We're talking about vape pins. And it is water vapor with all these other pieces to it that's going in and out of your lungs. So obviously, it's going to be harmful. But some of the big things with it, with this vape that's going on, it's extremely appealing to teens. And I can tell you right now, there are teens at Rangeland High School, Middle School, that vape. Happens in Meeker, happens everywhere. It is extremely, they have a very, very hard time resisting it. It's marketed to them by Big Tobacco. All of the vape companies are owned by Big Tobacco. Just, it's really interesting how much money is put into the marketing towards children. What it also does, although it's harmful, it also normalizes smoking. And anytime we can keep smoking, we can prevent somebody from moving towards smoking, I believe as a society, we need to do that. Children particularly that start out with vaping are four times more likely to end up with cigarettes. So that's where the vapor caper comes in. Start them on vape pins, they will end up in cigarettes. Big Tobacco makes lots of money. Also, it is a one-way bridge or a gateway. In these pictures here, there's just not a lot of great pictures around vaping, so the gateway arch there, the bridge there. But it is what we consider in public health as a gateway drug. It is something that leads you to something more, something bigger, something more. In this case, it's around smoking. Okay? So that's one of the problems. The vape, number of adults that are vape, that are vaping has tripled in the recent years. One in four Colorado youth vape right now. There are 450 different types of vape products, these tanks, these pins, all eight different e-juices. And there's zero regulation or standardization of ingredients. So anything could essentially be put in there. Okay? So that's a concern. An additional concern is the impact, the problems this creates with our law enforcement. So in my mind, I can imagine it. Somebody comes into the town council here, and they start vaping in the front row. Okay? That's odd. There is nothing any of us can do about it, because it is not illegal. Vaping is not illegal in a public place. All right? So I can just imagine how this would end up in a situation. So a police officer says, excuse me, ma'am, you can't be smoking in here. Because they can't tell, the vape pin could be the one that looks just like a cigarette. You cannot be smoking in here. We have a Clean Indoor Air Act. Comes up to the person, and they say, come on, you crazy policeman, I'm vaping, this is legal. Yes, it is. Okay, all right. Well, come to find out, the individual's vaping marijuana. So marijuana can be vaped as well, and that is a huge problem. It puts law enforcement in these very, very awkward situations. Makes them very hard, it creates a very difficult discussion on the beginning, when they see somebody vaping, because they don't know if they're smoking or not. Trained law enforcement that have been around it a lot can probably tell, but it's still, you don't see it in Rangeland as much as you would in, or Fort Collins, some places like that. Then this whole loophole around marijuana is you can vape marijuana, and the smell is very, very minimal, so it's very, very hard to tell. So there's a lot of issues around vaping besides just the health risks. Okay? I would like to present a few solutions to you to talk about what we can do as in Rangeland to prevent this problem around vaping that leads to all these others. Is, right now, the Colorado reside statute, the 2514, has general smoking restrictions that many of us know, called the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act. Smoking is prohibited in all, in any indoor public areas. There are a few exemptions, airports, there's a few exemptions. But in general, public places, you cannot smoke in those places. So moving towards signage and ordinances that, just like this, is a huge help. No smoking or vaping, because vaping is that big, if there's a loophole there, is something that I would really encourage Rangeland to think about. Hospitals, places that do have no smoking signs, that they include the no vaping in their signage. And then this, I wouldn't expect you to read this at all, but this is an ordinance that, I believe I got this one out of, it was Aurora or Arvada. But so many of the municipalities across the state are moving towards actual ordinances, and that's what I would like to encourage you to consider. Is an ordinance, and I just highlighted it on this ordinance here, the city council deems it necessary to prohibit smoking of traditional nicotine products and electronic smoking devices in common areas, public places, workplaces, except as otherwise permitted by this division. So creating some ordinances that mimic what we already have on the Clean Indoor Air Act around smoking. It's an easy thing to do, and it puts it out to the world that we care, Rangeland cares about people, we care about health, and it's something that I would really like to you to continue some discussion about and think about. Vaping is a problem, I think it's going to become bigger and bigger and bigger. New topic, something maybe a lot of you don't know much about. I'm sure there's questions. I'd love to answer any questions you might have, or your thoughts.
Julie, can you provide a copy of that ordinance?
I can. I can provide you five to six different sample ordinances.
If you could get those to Peter, I'd appreciate that.
Yes.
Yeah, but I mean, electronic that we can set up and do for the community, like on Facebook.
Yes. I can do that. Any questions from the audience, or?
Sure. No, they say it's just, it's not carcinogenic, it's not smoke, okay? But it's still nicotine. And I don't know if you've ever been in a door building where people have smoked continuously, and the walls just give this thick, sticky, I know this for a fact, because my daughter and her husband, they used to live with me, and they smoked in my house, and lighted my gift. And long story short, they moved out, and I have a ramming heater, and the heater turned out from my house. I had to call in a nurse. They said it's because of the nicotine tar. Because they were using the vapor as well.
Yes.
I don't like the cigarette.
So cigarette smoke, definitely the smoke, and then there, with combustible tobacco, which is what we call cigarette smoke, there is the tar, and that really impacts our lungs, the tar, it's definitely the smoke. With secondhand vapor, there, we don't have the longitudinal studies left yet, because vaping is so new. We don't know when somebody's baked for 10 or 20 years, what it does to them or their environment. It's just now coming in, but we know it impacts the environment, it impacts pets, people, those sorts of things as well. So there are secondhand vaporizations as well. You're right.
Does it have a age to vaping, like for instance, cigarettes?
So you have to be 18. Yeah, well, this thing I passed around, it stamps on the back, no sale to minors. I didn't get carbon, I haven't gone through a lot. But it is a problem, vaping, sales of vaping products, very seldom are minors actually active they're 18. So it falls into the hands of children so easily. I'm going to be a leak.
Sure would have gotten a no nicotine permit.
So there is.
That's why I have a smoking free permit.
Yes, there is. There, so particularly with tanks and e-juice, you can purchase different levels of nicotine, from e-juice.
Yeah, I'm correct.
You can have higher levels, and you can back down. And theoretically, that is what helps somebody cease smoking. And it does work in a portion of the time. But what we find out is so many of the times, people are dual users, and so they will vape where it's socially appropriate, and your buddies can, people can say, oh, you know, okay, Barb, you're quipping this smoking thing, I see you're vaping, good job. But they also are continuing to smoke. But you can back down on your nicotine levels, and vaping, used as a cessation product, should be used along with counseling and other supports to help control the oral fixation and things around, and just some psychological connections. But there are certain instances where it definitely can work. Your question. All right. Well, I would love emails, questions, calls, stop by my office. I'm in Rangeland periodically, but I'm always available by telephone, and I try to get that to you if you're interested. I have some cards if you want to catch me later, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next item is discussion with the wildlife specialist, USDA. David Moreno is going to be presenting. Is that correct? Please identify yourself at the podium, sir.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Cy H. von Wilhelm, Esquire Woodruff III. My name is Cy Woodruff. We've met with Dave Moreno, Tad, Justin, they'll all speak. We have an opportunity, and I'm not trying to take away the floor from these guys. Craig cut a position up there, Dave has come to the county. The federal government would support us hiring a position. People say predator control, government hunter. All those answers are right, but these people would like to give you a presentation on just what they're capable of doing, what they can do. We, the commissioners, have not dedicated any funds to this, but when the federal government brought $34,000 to the table, they need to get that money allocated. Dave will explain that again soon, but I think you'll be intrigued to see what they can do with actually your ravens and vultures and... can do with actually your ravens and vultures and Julie's here over public health issues if you have any questions with her. But let me introduce Dave and Dave will do a better job.
Thank you, Cy. Uh, David Moreno, USDA Wildlife Services. I am the district supervisor located in Grand Junction. I have been there for 22 years or a little bit more than that. I'd also like to introduce, uh, Tad Lee, Specialist from Craig, Colorado, and Justin Ewing, who is also a Specialist with Wildlife Services out of Meker area. The mission of our program is to prevent or reduce wildlife damage as it relates to private property, agricultural, industrial property, and protection of natural resources, including, uh, management of endangered species. We work hand in hand with US, uh, with, with the local, uh, Colorado Parks and Wildlife folks. We also work at the state level. Uh, we work on issues regarding bears, lions, uh, human fatalities related to those species. Primarily, we do a lot of work for the protection of agriculture. And as Cy indicated, uh, we've, um, the Route Moffett Woolgrowers in Craig relinquished a position and for the first time in 22 years, we actually have money associated from the federal government to continue that position in another location. And as Cy indicated, there's been a lot of interest, uh, from the folks in Rio Blanco County and we'd like to kind of promote that. I also have, I'd like to actually ask, uh, Tad to come up and just speak a little bit and also for Justin. But I also brought a presentation, I think that is very important, uh, for everybody to kind of recognize what's happening on the landscape as it relates to, uh, predators and predation on livestock, not only in the United States, but also here in Colorado. And that relates specifically to both sheep operations and cattle operations. At this time, I'd like to, um, have Tad come up and then maybe Justin, just to explain a little bit about what their positions are doing and then I'd like to continue with that presentation.
I've been doing it all day. Hi, I'm Tad with Wildlife Services. Uh, like I said, uh, I was out of Craig, Colorado, out of Moffett County. I've specifically worked with the wool growers there, um, but we do a lot of other things. As Cy would say, we can, we take care of stuff all the way from, uh, gophers all the way to rapids, uh, bear, coyotes, lions, stuff like that. I've had a lot of questions today. I've got to meet a ton of people today. Lots of people talking about the gophers and the, and the ground squirrels and all the stuff and, and the ravens and, uh, human health and safety issues that come with them. And that is something that we deal with, um, too. So it's not, everybody takes a perception that we're just government trappers and all we take care of is, is coyotes, lions and bears. And that's not true. We have federal permits in place to take care of, uh, people with northern flicker problems, people with, uh, ground squirrel problems that carry diseases or even human health safety issues, um, raven problems, um, from, from livestock damage all the way to human health and safety issues, uh, vulture problems that we've taken care of. So just to give you a little insight of other things that we do besides just coyote and bear and livestock problems, so.
My name's Justin Ewing, so I'm the Wildlife Specialist in Rio Blanco County at the time. And there was a lot of interest aside from my position. I'll explain how I'm funded. Uh, I basically work for the Woolgrowers, uh, Rio Blanco Woolgrowers Association. Their membership gathers dues, um, a head tax assessment that funds their portion of the contract for me to work, um, on their, on their operations. So I specifically work for only the Woolgrowers group. There's been a lot of interest outside of what I do. That's why Tad's here and, and we're here is to see if there's enough interest to add a second position in Rio Blanco County. There's been a lot of interest the last year over wolves, possibility of wolves coming to Colorado, the explosion of the bear population and then its effect on wildlife and agriculture. So these issues have come up and, and, um, there's a lot of, um, people that are impacted by wildlife damage as well as wildlife deer and elk license sales, all these communities. I doubt if there's a person in Rio Blanco County, one way or the other, is, doesn't derive some kind of benefit from the wildlife, um, side of the operation like the deer and elk hunting, that type of thing. We specifically, I specifically just deal with predation on sheep. So most of my, well, in the winter, I come down here a lot, work on the sheep allotments here west of town. Summertime, I spend basically everything in the mountains above Meker, uh, just dealing mainly with bears. Bears become, the last two years, if not the last three, have become the major, um, predator killing sheep. It used to be nothing but coyotes with very few bears and lions. There's so many bears now that they've become the number one sheep killer out there. So in my district, that is. Like I said, the Woolgrowers up there, they pay a head tax per head. I work exclusively for them. Everybody outside of that organization really doesn't have access to my, um, services because I am tied directly to them because they fund me. If this second position happens, it would be a countywide position. So the cities, both cities, towns, Meker and Rangeli would have access to it as well as all the other ranchers that are out there, especially the cattlemen, that don't at this time have any access to really get our help. So, um, the wolf thing, real quick, I know we want to touch on wolves a little bit. Um, there's a lot of public meetings going around right now, mostly in Carbondale, Aspen, uh, those kinds of things there. What we're thinking is they're going to try to put wolf free introduction on the ballot, try to force the state of Colorado to bring wolves back. There's a whole myriad of contradictory laws if that were to happen, but there's a big, seems like a big push to start generating public support for that. So that, I don't know if you've been reading about the wolf meetings put on by the Sierra Club in this place, Steamboat was one of the first ones. They did one in Carbondale, Aspen. So wolves would be a tremendous impact on the wildlife and agriculture industries. I know a ton of things about wolves. Real quick, in Yellowstone, when they put wolves in there, there was 19,000 elk. Today, there's around 4,500 to 5,000. So wolves have a definite impact on the bigger game species. So if the fishing game, Parks and Wildlife were to have to cut their license sales by 10%, 20% would be a huge impact in this county. So that's part of something we do. It's a side benefit of us protecting agriculture in the areas that we, me, uh, and the guys in Craig do most of our predator work. Their deer populations are leaps and bounds better than areas that aren't receiving our work. I mean, they're just, they're finishing a 10-year study on that. And it's obvious that where we do our work for the coyotes, lions and bears, their deer populations are better. The Piantz Creek Deer Study is another one where they've decided that their major problem with fawn survival is predators. The number one being black bears, second being mountain lions, coyotes, bobcats are third and fourth. So, um, anyway, we're involved in those things, trying to get a handle on, along with Parks and Wildlife about, you know, how to deal with these issues. But with the declining deer population, it's going to be something that's going to have to be discussed and, and something done about it if we're going to continue to have deer hunting in Rio Blanco County. So, um, anyway, that's about all I got to say. I know David's got a real good presentation to put on, so I'll turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin, and, um, uh, members of the council, thank you. And I apologize for such a blunt introduction of our program. I'm going to take just a couple of minutes to kind of, um, talk a little bit about the history of our program. We were given birth as an agency in 1915. Congress, uh, needed an agency that had personnel that could go out and actually try and control the wolf depredations that were actually occurring in the West. Since that time, in 1931, the Animal Damage Control Act was actually born, which gives us the authority as an agency, gives us the, the congressional direction and the money that comes from Congress to be able to go out and propagate programs and deal specifically with wildlife damages as it relates to all of those different issues. Here in the state level, we work with, uh, the State Department of Ag and we work under their rules and regulations to take care of those species that are causing damage. And, and the reason I bring that up is that there is a split of thorn in this state between Colorado Parks and Wildlife and the State Department of Ag. Uh, where the State Department of Ag recognizes bears and lions as predators or depredators, as you would call it, and they're also a big game species in the state of Colorado. That's why there's a split authority. We work under that State Department of Ag authority, but we also work hand in hand with Colorado Parks and Wildlife and we also have an MOU and a financial agreement to deal with bears and lions specifically across the Northwest and the Southwest regions. With that, I'll take any questions from the council or the public and then if not, then what I'd like to do is I'd like to move on, um, to this presentation that was put together actually by my boss in Denver and he utilized the National Agricultural Statistics Service, survey that, that's done with all livestock operators across the range and across the United States.
I have a question. So does, uh, do you, is every animal euthanized or are they take, captured and, and brought to another place? What, how do you?
It depends, it depends on the situation. When we're dealing with livestock, for example, if we've got bears and lions that are killing livestock, there, there is no opportunity to relocate predators that are already killing. We work with, hand in hand with Parks and Wildlife and there's a few cases where we've worked bears specifically that have been in urbanized environments like Aspen or Glenwood Springs, where we've helped them immobilize and have those animals removed and relocated. We've also done it for mountain lions in the urban environment right outside of Grand Junction. But for the most part, when we're involved in managing a species, it's because we, it's been determined we need to remove that individual from that population.
What, what methods of, uh, hunting or trapping do you use?
Uh, we use a variety of methods. We use everything from foothold traps, uh, cage traps. In some cases, uh, under restriction, we can use sodium cyanide ejectors, which are called M44s. We also use aerial predator management. So when we're looking at a population of coyotes, red foxes that need to be reduced, we use an airplane, an aircraft to remove those by lethally shooting them out of the airplane. We can use footsnares, cage traps, not only for small terrestrial mammals, but also for the larger, uh, mammals like bears and lions. We also use night vision equipment specifically to target those predators that have come in, killed, maybe made a cache of that livestock. We come back in and we can target that individual using night vision equipment.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
Why, why don't they remove some of the restrictions from the common public so that we can do stuff like that?
That's a good question. Um, that actually, uh, part of that discussion took place, uh, today at, um, it's called Biology Days in the Northwest region with the Parks and Wildlife because they recognize that the, specifically in the bear population, they've had a huge increase over time, ever since the bear amendment took place. And the restrictions there were you cannot hunt over bait, you cannot use dogs. Now, the difference is in our, under our authority, we can use dogs specifically to track and trail those depredating bears and lions. Uh, lions are obviously a huntable species in this state and there are a lot of houndsmen and that's really one of the reasons that you don't see a real big increase in lion depredations across the landscape. And I'll show that in one of the slides, but that's a very good question. Any other questions?
So is this just like public, they notify us because you're going to potentially earn some money?
Yeah, this is a, uh, an introductory meeting for our program here, uh, for the, for actually for the entire county, but specifically tonight for, uh, the city of Rangeli. To let you know that we are available, we, we do have that position available, we do have that funding available as, as Cy indicated. Did I answer your questions? Okay. Any other question? Yes, sir.
I have to answer this question, but I think it's important for others to know. You guys can also handle, uh, small animals like rodents, such as prairie dogs and stuff that are infesting areas that are coming into town and stuff, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. We, we handle, uh, not only the, the small end of the rodents like prairie dogs, ground squirrels, but we, we also do work on specifically on, you know, uh, skunks, raccoons, those types of what, what are considered mesopredators and potentially any other species that would be a potential health hazard, uh, in the environment. Uh, one of the things that we bring to the table is this, this umbrella of authority. Uh, we talked a little bit about, uh, the bear situation. We have the authority to actually utilize dogs. Uh, the other thing that we do is we attain a permit for the county level when we're going to do our aerial predator management. That is something that is not available to the general public. The other things that we bring to the table, for example, our sodium cyanide and DRC 1339, those are, uh, chemicals or toxicants that can be used specifically to target individuals that are, that are registered by us for use only by us.
I've got one more.
Yes, Andy.
Do you guys have, uh, any involvement in the wild horse population or overpopulation?
Not directly, but in the, in the past, we have had indirect contact. Our sister agency, which is the National Wildlife Research Center, was contacted many years ago to develop a contraceptive device that could be delivered via, um, some type of firearm. Uh, we're involved in that aspect. We, we've been asked to be, to sit at the table because the wild horse issue is a, is a very big issue. It's a very, uh, big issue on the landscape as far as overgrazing and degradation of the environment. Things that BLM, I mean, have, have obviously been dealt with and I think that we can provide some assistance in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So you're going to help us out in this part of Rio Blanco County, is that correct? So if I have a problem, I can contact you and say, you know, I've got rapids coming in that are destroying or eating some of my crops, okay?
Yes, sir.
So I contact you and is that how it works?
Yes, and if everybody heard that question, he's talking about ravens, ravens causing damage. Ravens are a protected species under the Microtoy Bird Treaty Act. We, on an annual basis, receive a multi-purpose depredation permit and it has multiple bird species that are covered under that act. And, and we utilize that permit to go in and primarily do hazing to try and reduce the damage, but we also, um, utilize lethal means as part of that hazing. We also help other producers and assisted, having an application put in in case they need to hold their own permit for the taking of those species. We do the investigation and we pass that forward so that that permit can, can be obtained by the individual.
So if I need self-control, how do I go about, um, contacting you or telling?
That is correct. You would, you would contact me, I would evaluate your situation and then I would go through the process of trying to give you technical recommendations and/or helping you obtain a permit or potentially if our specialist was in place, have the specialist go in there and address that problem for you. Yes, ma'am.
What are the expectations for public on how we can help ourselves create a call?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and I do that already. I get a, a myriad of phone calls regarding, um, you know, hogs killing chickens from, you know, or, you know, all sorts of different predator or wildlife type problems and I do deal with those. Okay. Well, what I like to do is I'd like to go into this, um, this presentation that we've got here.
I'll turn the slide to Peter.
You'll, Peter, yes. Thank you very much, Peter. I appreciate that. Um, okay. On this first slide, we see the state of Colorado and it's broken up into three different districts. The Northwest District in the dark green is my district. I've got 16 counties within my district. I've got eight specialists, five of those are full-time specialists and I've got some part-time employees that assist in trying to take care of most of the problems within that district. There are some places that we don't have coverage, uh, that we try and address, um, if we can. My counterparts, Kendra Cross is the supervisor out of Lakewood. She's in the northeast corner. And then my other counterpart, Shane Coyle is out of Pueblo and he pretty much handles the southern part of the county. The difference between all three districts is primarily we are involved in the protection of agricultural resources in my district. The Northeast District- The Northeast District is primarily deals with airports, so it's human health and safety, it's preventing wildlife hazard strikes at commercial airports, military airports, and work in the urban environment trying to reduce some of the wildlife problems there. In the Southern District or the Pueblo District, my counterpart there primarily works with counties, similar to the program that we're proposing here today. He has two or three counties together that place one specialist trying to address all of the different problems associated with wildlife in those counties, giving priority obviously to those problems that are greater economically or greater in severity depending on the situation. Next slide, please. What we have here is a 20-year snapshot of predators in the United States on cattle, both adult cows and calves. And you see in 1995, there's two lines, the yellow line is obviously the adult cattle and the blue line is the calves. And what's important to note, in 1995, the ratio of cows that were being killed and calves that were being killed is a ratio of 1 to 2.5. So about two and a half calves for every cow that was being killed. If you look at today, or actually, let me back up just a little bit. These are NAS statistics and they're only done once every five years. For the cattle industry, they're done on the fifth year, like 95, 2000, 2005. For the sheep industry, they're also done on a five-year interval, but it's like 94, 99. I just wanted to point that out before I went forward. But if you look at 2015, these statistics, the gap in predation levels has increased to a ratio of four and a half calves to one cow killed. And if you look at the overall lineage from 1995 to 2015, even the adult cattle suffered a small increase in obviously predation rates. Next slide, please. When we break that up for Colorado in cow-cab operations, what we see is that there's a greater disparity than the national average. If you look at 1995, you see that right under 500 cows were being reported as killed as compared to over 4,000 calves in Colorado. The calf death ratio over time has stayed pretty close to about the same. It has increased a little bit and that's normal because obviously calves are way more vulnerable to predation and predation events than adult cattle. But if you take a look at 2015 on the adult cattle, they've more than doubled in predation rates over time, even here in this state. And obviously, you don't have too many predation events on adult cattle unless you've got large predators. Next slide, please. When we break up the predation events in Colorado by species, it really, we got some interest, very interesting statistics here. In the light blue columns, you've got coyote depredations for all calves and cattle across the states, I mean, across Colorado, excuse me. And that's, it's had its peaks and valleys over time. You've got some higher predation years and then some lower predation years and there's been a steady incline over time. If you look, if you look at the next color blue, which is mountain lions, mountain lions have been pretty static in their predation events across Colorado. The reason that that is there is because we have sport hunting for mountain lions. The sportsmen that are utilizing dogs to capture lions and because the quotas are set correctly for each of those areas, this is one of the big deterrents in having more lion damage. So mountain lions are really being managed through Parks and Wildlife with the number of tags that are allowable and the number of hunters that are being successful in the field. Dogs, feral dogs primarily in red, have been pretty nominal over time. There's always been some type of dog predation on livestock across the range. We normally deal with the local sheriff department because it's really, if you look at the statutes, the sheriffs are the ones that are in charge of feral dog predation. In many cases, the sheriff will, through an email, will relinquish that right and give that right to us so that we can help that producer stop that problem. The very interesting thing in this, in this graph that we have here is the black columns, which is the bears. If you, if you see that, they actually came onto the scene in 2010. So bear predation became substantial enough that cattle producers started reporting their losses to NAS. And if you go five years down the road, 2015, it more than doubled in damage. Now, we've had quite a bit of discussion with Parks and Wildlife as to, as it relates to these statistics right here. And the reason why is because we know that there have been some cattle predation events in the past, but in the past, they were nominal and they were mixed in with the column of other on this graph, the green color, and it wasn't substantial. Today, because of the number of bears that we're seeing in the environment and the number of cattle that are being found as predation, this is the indicator that we've got, that we've got a really big growing bear problem. Next, please. We took a look at the Western States under the NAS report and we compared both black bear and grizzly bear predation events on cattle. If you take a look at Montana, Idaho and Wyoming, their numbers are pretty substantial and in parentheses, you can tell like Montana, 24% of adult cattle that were preyed on were preyed on by grizzlies. In Wyoming, that number is 13% and astoundingly over in Idaho, 30% of the cows that were preyed on were preyed on by grizzlies. Now, if you go down to Colorado and Utah, you see a different, a different aspect. Obviously, we have no grizzlies, but the bear predation rates in Colorado are pretty substantial compared to the surrounding states. In fact, even, even compared to the northern states, they're pretty substantial. Black bear predation in Colorado for adult cattle was 10%, 20% for calves. In Utah was pretty substantial as well, 26% for cattle death loss and 7% for calves in Utah. So Colorado and Utah really are seeing a big increase in the number of bear problems on the landscape. At the bottom here, Colorado reported 1,160 cattle lost to predation and 3,920 calves killed by black bears in 2015. The big point of discussion here with Colorado Parks and Wildlife is that cattle producers did not report or did not claim against their damage program that they have in place, only I think under 30 cows were reported as compensatable during that period of time. And you've got numerous, in fact, you've got thousands of predation events that obviously are not accounted for. Next slide, please. When you compare cattle to sheep, the numbers are kind of inverse and if we take a look at the yellow line across the bottom, that's actually the inventory of sheep across the range in the United States. So for the last 20 years, we've had a substantial decrease in the inventories of sheep. That also includes Colorado. So obviously, the blue line on top, those are lambs, the green light below that are sheep. They both have a similar trend together. Obviously, lambs are way more susceptible to predation than ewes are, but they're both susceptible to all the types of predators that we have here. Next slide, please. When we look at that damage specifically for Colorado and we break out the different species, coyotes, which are in blue, are obviously the number one predator, they have been for many years, but there is a decline in the number of predation events over time. Part of that is substantiated by the loss in the inventories. The other part is that our program, I feel we're very effective where we work for sheep producers, so we minimize the amount of damage that is seen related to these species. If we take again, if we take a look at the green indicators here, these are the bears and there is a slight increase over time in these, actually, this is 20 years of data. And what we see now, and I think Justin alluded to it earlier, is that 20 years ago, the primary work that we did in the environment throughout the winter, throughout the spring and into the summer was primarily coyote depredation work. Today, we switch that off. Once the bears come out of hibernation, usually right around June or a little bit before, we start seeing predation events. And actually, we've even had some predation events as early as April in some years. But this trend has continued and it, once we get into the summer, as Justin indicated, it's almost 100% bear work in the forest allotments and that's, that's a result of the number of bears that we have to deal with and that are in that landscape. Again, here, mountain lions in yellow are pretty nominal in the environment. They really don't cause that big of an issue. When there is an issue, we address it under that MOU that I talked about with Parks and Wildlife. Next slide, please. When we take a look at and compare Colorado to the nation as far as sheep and lambs that are killed by bears, we do see a big jump over these 20 years. If you look at 1994, bear predation in Colorado was a little bit more than, almost double what the national average was. And if you compare that over time and you take a look at 2014, which was the last dataset was taken, it's more than four times the gap there. An indicator again that Colorado is suffering from a bigger bear population. Next slide, please. Black bear predation on sheep, if you look at and we concentrate on both again, Colorado and Utah, you see that the numbers are a thousandfold compared to the other states. Predation nationally on sheep is 5% and lambs is 3% by predator statistic loss. But if you take a look at Colorado, at the statement down there below, sheep and lamb death loss from bears in Colorado is 5% of the sheep, which are the adults, and 26% of lambs. So we've got a really big increase in the predation rates of what's happening on the landscape. If you compare that to some of the other states, even Montana, Wyoming, Idaho, their predation events on black bear is minimal. Really, the big threats up there are grizzly bears and cattle. Next slide, please. This slide depicts the effort that Wildlife Services personnel have put over the years. And if you take a look at the beginning of that graph in 2005, we put in right over 800 hours, man-hours, on bear control issues. Several times throughout the years, we've hit the 3,000-hour mark now. I mean, there's some peaks and valleys there in that, those peaks and valleys relate to food source years. So when you got a bad food source year for bears out there, they're coming in and they're eating domestic stock, they're eating, this last year, we had lots of cornfields that were actually affected, a lot of apiaries, you know, bee hives, we had a lot of orchards that had fruit on them and bears were coming in by two or three bears every night just snapping branches off those trees. We address that with Parks and Wildlife and we continue to have an escalated rate on the number of bears that Wildlife Services has been taking. Next slide, please. And that's what I was alluding to right there. These are the numbers of bears taken by Wildlife Services to alleviate damage across the state. And you can also see the peaks and valleys and these peaks and valleys again relate to the food source years on, in the high country, but you can tell that over time, we've escalated or the bear damage continues to escalate. In 2017, that blue line on top is just the difference in what the mean would be. So we've actually exceeded over 120-some bears just in this state alone on our actions. That doesn't relate to all of the bears that are taken by sportsmen, which kind of is about 1,500. And then there's a whole nother, I think it's another, probably 1,100 of bears that are taken by CPW and some of their actions. And I think, next slide, I think that, okay. So to end the presentation, there's a question, why so much of predation in livestock in Colorado? And there's a few points there. Obviously, we've got some changes in the landscape, fires, pine and spruce beetles, energy exploration may have something to do that, we're not sure, these are questions that are being asked, timber harvest, those are changes in the landscape. One thing that we do know for sure, when you look at point number two, is that there's more prey on the landscape to eat when we talk about elk calves. During the work in the summer, especially like the work that Justin and my other specialists do, during those first two weeks in June or possibly even three weeks, bear complaints drop almost to zero on the landscape. And so what's happening is that even though the bears are awake and the problems are starting, elk and mule deer fawns as well, elk calves are on the ground, that's, we think that there's a shift in the food source and the bears are concentrating on those food sources. Once those species are big enough to run, then they're back to killing domestic livestock. And then last but not least, restrictive practices that we have in this state for managing bears is an issue. And with that, I will take questions or we can engage in more conversation.
I, just stepping in just one sec. I've been here all day, given the shake hands and learning all, you know, a ton of people today. And a lot of my main concerns and things that were brought up are ravens, prairie dogs, vultures and bulls. And maybe some of you guys are here that have questions about them and Dave could answer a few more questions that you had about them than I, than I could answer or if you had any other questions, we could bring them on.
Yes, we'll take questions or engage in discussion. Members of the council?
So one of the questions I have, just looking at that, is like Colorado and Utah are so much higher than everywhere else. Did Utah adopt some of the same bear hunting rules that we did?
No, no, I think Utah has different bear hunting rules. I think you can hunt bears with dogs, sport hunt them in Utah, is that not correct? Yeah, okay. So yeah, I think, I think that they're suffering some of those issues because there are just more bears on the landscape.
They also have a pursuit season all summer long where they have a lot of pursuit bears all summer, but it doesn't hurt them, so they just chase them all right over.
Apparently, it's not taking care of the ewes because their predation on, I think on sheep was bigger than it was on lambs, if I remember correctly, so.
This is more of a localized question, but is, are they still transplanting bears? Like trouble bears from everywhere else, are they bringing them here?
Andy, that's a great question. While I was at Biology Days today with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, they discussed that very issue. And they have been for years relocating bears, problem bears, what they think are nuisance bears, not necessarily damaging bears, but they're nuisance bears that are either in trash cans, trying to get into dog food outside of people's homes where it might be considered a human health and safety threat. What I learned today is that out of all of those bears that they've captured, the Northwest Region has traditionally ear-tagged each one of those bears, that's part of their policy. 25% of those bears actually get into trouble again, okay? The remaining bears are unknown, some of them are harvested and hunters do actually turn those tags in, but a bigger remaining portion of those bears never come up as issues. Once in a while, my specialist will catch one with ear tags, so we know that that's a repeat offender basically, you know, they took them out into the environment. But yes, as far as I know, CPW will, has continued to relocate those bears and I think that they take into consideration maybe some of the grazing allotments when they do that to minimize conflict.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you perceive a bigger problem with the bears in the seasons, given that we've had a very mild winter, so they're not in need of being hibernation as well?
To address the question, do we have bears with problems when we have mild winters? You know, I think that actually, two of the factors that affect bear populations the most is actually drought and a late freeze. Once the majority of the vegetation in the high country starts to gain their foliage and a lot of those are berries or nuts, if you have a hard freeze, it kills the flowers off and they don't produce, so then there's a food crop failure for the bears. Likewise, if we have a very limited moisture content, then for example, acorns are almost non-productive and that's one of their biggest, biggest food sources, especially in the late fall. Good question. Any other questions?
Can Justin go after the cattle managers strictly, you both, like can the cattle manager get in the program and pay so much for the number of cattle?
Currently, Justin is tied specifically to the wood growers. But I mentioned earlier that we have an MOU and a financial agreement with Colorado Parks and Wildlife. That's been in place for over 12 or 14 years now. And I have two bear and lion specialists on staff. If there are predation events that are taking place outside of the wood grow organizations, working with the district wildlife manager, all he has to do is call me and I'll be in contact and I send my folks out here to address that problem.
Okay. On the run last year where you guys were taking bear and lion, who was paying that? Was Colorado Parks and Wildlife paying for that?
Yeah, the question is when we were on the run last year, and I'm assuming that we were talking about the predator study that's taking place? Yes. Colorado Parks and Wildlife paid for that time, but they did that through a grant from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Okay, and that was connected with Chuck Anderson's study?
That is correct. That is Chuck Anderson who's leading that study and we are working directly with Chuck. It is our NIPA that Chuck used to be able to obtain that grant. That's how we're involved. You're welcome.
Si?
I'd like to clarify that. I think for everybody to understand, we're looking at this countywide from a town's perspective. I think your issues are the vultures, the prairie dogs, different things like that. But the intent possibly coming from the commissioners is, would you appreciate his services? Would you like us to try to make something happen and have a year to see if this was worthwhile for a countywide operation? The Division of Wildlife could not be here today. As he said, they pay in $100,000 a year. If there's an issue with a cattle rancher or somebody's llama is killed by bears or lions, the division pays that bill. That's separate of what we're doing here. They pay for that. But this would give us a chance for the smaller animals that bother you mostly in a town. Bill Devergi would support this. Terry would support it. And to me, we're merely just planting a seed with you tonight to see if you think there would be an interest in that service.
For me...
I don't want to make the council meeting go all night long.
No, I think that, you know, prairie dogs, vultures, ravens, skunks, all those things have diseases that, you know, we would just love to get rid of. So I'm very open to having help getting rid of those. I don't, I think that would be a good thing for our community to have some of that, some of those dangers removed.
Well, I'll just ask you guys. It seems like we got a bunch out there that are here for those reasons. What are you guys' thoughts?
Our public out there, are y'all nodding your head yes, we need to, or no?
Yes, they need to.
Okay.
On that question, Andy, yeah, because we had a massive bull problem at Gulf Coast last year that they fought for a while. So somebody had help with that, I think it was.
Not right in front of the deer.
She said, not lions.
Roy King with Police Department. We, over the last few years, since I've been here, we've had about five bears in town. We've had half a dozen mountain lions usually down here that are sick. And it would be nice to have some help with those. DOW generally does a very good job taking care of them. We have a problem if road control is in particular on the north side of town, where we have a large predup population. And we even have kids out there playing with them. That is a healthy welfare, but we're not allowed to poison them. We're left with little resources to deal with those. I think this would be a good opportunity for us to take advantage of an offer to test this out, get rid of the problem, let's try and get it under control.
Did it ask why you were restricted from taking prairie dogs or...
You guys are very smart. And in town, we're allowed to do control, trying to shoot prairie dogs and not shoot houses or piss somebody is a little bit touching. We're not allowed to poison.
So let me ask you that question specifically because some of the methods for taking prairie dogs are used to us. We've got to use two or three restricted use pesticides only. And then there's an order strip, you just ask car drivers, they can utilize to take those. So is there a town restriction to prohibit that?
We're just not, that's not something that we're familiar with or allowed or that I miss how it's doing. We also have children playing those fields, so I mean, there would have to be some control grid plan.
Sorry, it takes a concentrated effort in utilizing the right methods to be able to reduce that population.
That's correct.
Now, is this associated next to the airport?
No.
They're all through town.
The grocery store, you go out from the grocery store by the parking lot, they're friggin' everywhere. They are everywhere. We have water in the town, people's jars, kids playing with them. It's dangerous.
Jeff, you want to say anything? We're not trying to keep you.
We appreciate the information, Si. That's why we put you on the agenda. We wanted to hear it. And I think there's, I know there's been an issue with skunks over the years. And years ago, the police department used to handle them. But now, my understanding is on skunks, you're not allowed to shoot them, you can trap them, but you have to relocate them. And they just come back to town anyway. So skunks have been a real problem for health issues and all that.
And you legally can't, you have to dispose of the skunk. You can't transport him and turn him loose somewhere else.
There's a law in the statutes that prohibits relocation of skunks. Because skunks are the one mammal that can carry the rabies virus up to six weeks after they're infected.
Yeah, so as soon as we can't do anything about skunks. Except, you know...
We can euthanize them. Yeah.
Got to catch up.
We can certainly help with those issues.
Long needle.
I don't know how to damn, I don't know to take your time.
Yeah, scientists asked me from a public health standpoint. So with rabies, skunks and coons are primarily, they carry rabies. However, we do not have terrestrial rabies here yet. And that's the key term is yet. It's very prevalent on the front range. It's coming. We know that terrestrial rabies will come here. And so if you have a lower population of skunks and coons, those sorts of nuisance animals that carry rabies, then your potential for having rabies issues in your municipalities is less.
Wasn't it true that a few years back, we had bats that were carrying rabies? And they were, bats too had rabies.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to present our program to you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing. Okay. Peter, you want to go back to your report or you want to finish up the new business?
I can do that.
Your report? Okay.
Is there someone here waiting on the...
Just a few things.
Nope.
We're working on an estimate right now for the RBC fiber installation at four of our locations.
Try and get them on so everybody can hear. Okay, go ahead, Peter. You guys, if we could quiet down out there so we can finish our meeting, we'd appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Go ahead, Peter.
Anyway, we're looking to have Town Hall, the gas department, water treatment plant and Public Works wired up to form an intranet of all of our locations and also utilize the VoIP phone system throughout the system so that we can have extensions from the main office to each of those locations. So right now, we're getting quotes on that and we'll probably be coming back to the council to take a look at that number once we get everybody's, each one of the contractors' information As you know, there's an AGNC mini-grant you're going to be looking at tonight. So there's a number of partners with that grant and we'll talk about that a little bit. But we're looking to initiate that sometime after May 15th and finish it in the middle of the summer. So once we get to that item, we can talk about more about that if you have any questions on that. We're also working on another grant, just getting started on that with the chamber. And I don't want to go into that. Connie would like to keep that kind of confidential in terms of what exactly we're working on right now. But so we're not going to talk a lot about that, but that grant application, Jocelyn will be helping out with that. And she'll actually get started in earnest tomorrow sometime on that project. Last week, I attended, and in your packets back in the information section... I guess I don't have the right packet. Oh, yeah. Never mind. I attended the Northwest Transportation Planning Region Meeting in Steamboat Springs. And we went through a number of things with David Eller. He's the Region Three Director, talking about some of the major priorities on the 10-year master plan that they have. Two of the biggest, or two of the bigger priorities are the 13 corridor from I-70 to 80. They plan to get that completed hopefully in the next five to six years. It's going to take about $80 to $100 million to finish that up, at least get it to the border. And another project that I wasn't overly aware of, but I guess it's been on the shelf for a long time, on page three of the Region Three Development List. I don't know if we have a page number. Yeah, page 35 in your packets. But there's a $22.8 million project that's been, I hate to use that term, shovel-ready, but it's been sitting there for a long time, been planned, engineered, designed. And it was with funding from the federal government. And so now, for 18 years, they've been trying to find funding for a, pretty much a total reconstruction of the highway from mile marker 53 to 47 on Highway 139. So what happens by 2020, if they're not able to secure the funding, CDOT may have to pay the federal government back the half million dollars they used in planning for that project. But they're working pretty hard to try and secure a grant to build shoulders and redevelop that section of the highway. So that is a priority one for them. So we'll see if that happens in the next two years.
It's also got a $23 million...
Yeah, and there's a lot of competition for the money. Steamboat Springs is keenly aware of how to get their voice in there and they work it pretty hard. Jackson County now is coming on. I don't know if you're familiar with some of the oil and gas activity that's happening out there, but they haven't been getting much Region Three money and all of a sudden, they're vying for some of that money because of some of the impacts to their highways. Apparently, they're going to be putting down 2,000 wells in Jackson County, according to the representative that was at this meeting. So anyway, that's, we were able to get to make some comments and support the activity. Si was, he's not here, but he was there at the meeting along with the county engineer, Van Pilot, if you know him. So we're also still pushing forward with the building department inspector position, combining the building departments for the county and the town. And the 13th of March, we're going to have another work session with the county here in Rangeley.
13th or 14th?
It's a Monday.
What date did you say?
I say the 13th of March, I believe, is a Monday. No, that's a Tuesday, isn't it?
It's a Tuesday. It's a Tuesday.
The 12th would be the Monday.
Yeah. Well, I'll figure out that date, make sure that it's correct. I think I was told the 13th. Anyway, we're going to set up a work session to go through the structure of how that might look with a shared employee and how the expenses would be split out. And I'd like to get something together. See, our first meeting is the 13th.
Yeah.
I think it might have been the 19th then. Anyway, I'll firm that up. Maybe we can discuss that at the first meeting in March and see if you're in agreement with some of the organizational approach to sharing that employee. Any questions regarding any projects or... We're still working on the grant for presentation in March for the Tanglewood project. So...
Has there been any resolution on the water, the problem with the water holding facility? Any updates?
Oh, the clarifier tank out at the water treatment plant? Yes, there has. They had a discussion about that Friday or last week, I believe, with the Vice President Sika, who's the coatings representative. And they settled on a final plan of action. So the contractor's back out this week and they're executing on that plan. We're looking right now to extend the warranty period for another... We'd like to go from a one to two-year warranty period since it hasn't quite worked out the way they initially sold us.
Is it costing us anymore?
What's that?
Is there any more expense to the town as a result?
The only expense right now to the town, but we're hoping to pass that back to the contractor and to Sika, the coatings manufacturer, is the inspection, the additional inspection costs, which have been substantial in the testing and inspection. We're at about $30,000 on those costs. So within a week, week and a half, we expect to have a functional clarifier.
All right. Good. That'd be nice.
So a question about the transportation meeting. Did you guys have any elected official representatives there from the federal delegation?
From which delegation?
Federal. So Tipton's office, Gardner's office?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay. So I'm just going to kind of update you on where AGNC put us. They came to ours and updated us there and said, this infrastructure spending, this plan that President Trump's putting together? They asked for a request or requested a list of all projects our areas want and need. And they said, this is your wish list. Get it to us. They said, realistically, probably not going to get it a lot, but they want to know what projects we need done, what projects we want asked for money for, whatever, if they're doing this federal infrastructure plan. And that includes, obviously, that does much but broadband, roads, rail, obviously that stuff doesn't have huge impact. But I just was going to say, I think if we submit that with 139, I would say it needs to be a request. I don't even know if we ask for a tunnel or what, but basically, say it needs to be redone and it needs to be redone badly. And yeah, see what we get. I don't think we can throw a huge laundry list. We just don't have that much need for that, I don't think.
Is that, that's going to Gardner's office?
They said to go to all of them. Every one of them said it.
Oh.
So they said, get us the list we came, that was, so they can try to get it... It sounds like they're going to put them all on a sheet and say, these are all the things that need to be done. And then prioritize from there. I, like I said, I wouldn't expect much from it, but if we don't get our stuff in, then we're not going to get anything else, right?
That's right.
Yeah. So Andy, do you have some particulars on that, how that's submitted or...
Just, they said email them the list. The representatives, I can get you Bennett's and Tipton's if you need them. I guess I can get Gardner's too. I don't know if that's Betsy's, but...
Is that also applied to projects in town?
Yeah. I mean...
So any infrastructure-type project?
Anything.
Okay.
That was their criteria is this is, that's what they said, this is your Christmas wish list. Let us know what you need, what infrastructure you guys need, let us know so we can save the other problems. These are what we're trying to get from people, so.
So if we said we wanted a railroad into Rangeley?
Yeah. But seriously, I mean, continue it. It's, I don't know if we'd want to go regional or just stick to us, but I think it's fair enough for us to just stick to us for now. If we want to group it together with everybody else, that's a discussion to get clear and have soon.
I'm just going to help the water conservation program or project get...
Oh, for the reservoir?
And the reservoir, oh, yes. They even said reservoirs, that's all included. They even said reservoirs, that's all included, so.
That's a good one to bring up. There's a lot of more.
Airport up there. Yep. Anything infrastructure is what they told us, so.
That could be a, that could be a big list.
It's getting huge.
You don't ask, they can't say no, so you got to get...
We should probably put priorities on that.
Yeah, I would agree.
We'll get a red light with that.
Yeah.
Anything else, Peter?
No.
Any other questions for Peter?
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. Okay, we'll go back to our agenda for new business, discussion and action to approve the January 2018 financial summary. Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve January financials.
Second.
Lisa, second by Tyson, further discussion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, next one, discussion and action to approve a contribution of $500 to the CNCC Foundation Dinner Dance.
Come out of the community development budget. I think that's about what we did last year.
Is this to buy, it can be to buy tables, see what we're doing.
No, in the past, we've done like utility certificates, things like that. But what happens is, you know, if it's $50 certificate, that's what, nobody wants to go above that.
For the auction, is what we're...
Yeah, it's basically for the auction, for scholarships and promotion of the college.
I'll make a motion to approve the contribution of $500 to the CNCC Foundation Dinner Dance.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Andy Key, second by Matt. Further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Move on to discussion and action supporting the Colorado Fair Districts Initiative to Reform the Redistricting and Reapportionment Process in Colorado.
Okay, so, I want to try to keep my opinions out of this as much as possible and just kind of give you guys the information. So, everybody's aware of what gerrymandering is over there, we all know what's going on there. This is a process they're trying to put together to change how the redistricting is done in Colorado. It would create a nine-person commission. Three Democrats, three Republicans, and two Independents would form the nine-person committee. They want it to be nonpartisan right now. I mean, I don't think anybody would argue there's problems with the way they redistrict right now. It's completely partisan, the way it's done. They want to take it out of the courts' hands because right now, what happens is they try to agree on it at the legislative level, and when that doesn't happen, it goes to the courts. So, they feel like it should be handled at the legislative level or by a committee to do it. So, that's one of their goals, is to take it away from the courts. Let's see. Okay, so, just, I was taking notes when he was talking. Okay, I went through that. Okay, and so, right now, the way it's written right now, there's no requirement for balance at the state level. So, that doesn't really exist. They can essentially do what they want. In the state of Colorado, unaffiliated voters make up 36% of the voting population and have, at this point, no voice in redistricting at all. And it's all done, this is the thing they want to get rid of, too, is it's all done behind closed doors. So, there's no way of, no transparency with it, nothing like that. I went over the equal memberships. Okay, so, the legislature would select the party member. So, the Republican congregation, sorry, yeah, well, actually, the legislators would select who they want to be, the three representatives, the Democrats would select their three, and the Independents would be chose by senior judges.
So, the judges took it in?
The list on this is huge. I think it was in our, didn't I see that in our packet, Peter, the list?
Yeah, it is.
It's huge. There's actually a lot of both sides being involved in this.
But it's basically for transparency and for fairness and to make sure that all people are represented and it's not skewed, the whole thing about gerrymandering.
Yes. Yes, so that's the whole deal with it. I mean, it feels like you guys got a pretty good grasp on it, so I'll go into what was discussed at AGNC. It seemed like the general consensus was supportive. We did vote on it because there were questions we wanted to answer first. And those questions were, what is fair? Like, that was the first and foremost question. Because according to them, if we want it to be regional, we want it to be population, we want it to be these things, well, what, how is that defined? How is that defined in the sense of population? How is that defined in the sense of regional? I mean, is Rangeley regionally with Steamboat because we're in the northwest corner of the state, or how does that work, right? And just, I didn't say this, so I should, but it affects both the state level, the state districts and the federal districts. Also, they said, we're more than likely going to be getting another congressional district in Colorado, so it would be bumped up to 10 total states, eight congressional districts, which makes things really interesting. It's one of those things, now I'm going to put mine in, but I share the same concerns on what's fair. I also am very concerned with what does the region pertain to. I don't want to see, let's put it this way, when population starts being brought into it, the district's going to move towards more population, it has to, right? So, if they start moving us towards the mountains, we don't any longer share interest with them that we do currently with people in our district. Like, right now, our district is Moffett County or Blanco County from the state level. It's Moffett, Rio Blanco, Garfield. We have a lot of similarities with those counties. Now, if we start throwing in Route, Jackson, Summit, how does that change our culture In fairness, I mean, I want it to be that way. I want it to be fair. I want it to be a little more well-rounded, but it concerns me that we don't have those definitions on those things yet.
Because that was going to be my question, what's the criteria for, what are they using for criteria to redistrict?
I know those were the two big ones, was population, regional, and... What's that?
There's people who have minorities.
Minorities? Okay, yeah, there's a list in there. It's, I think there was like five things they were looking at. But, like I said, nothing is defined, and that's concerning for me.
Are they going to define it, Andy?
We are waiting to find that answer. So...
So, is that something we want to wait and see what the definitions are before we go either way?
I feel like that's, that would be my suggestion. At this point, yeah.
We don't want to go on a pick and a poke.
And just, I did want to do these, I forgot about this part, like, just so we're aware, like, there's one congressional district in Colorado that's considered competitive right now. And it was won by like 6% or 7% last year, and that was CD6. That's Mike Coffins' district in Florida. So, that's the federal, and then at the state, level three of 65 are competitive. So, just to acknowledge, there is a huge problem, but I just feel like we need to have that stuff defined before we say, like, I say, like, the foundation. The other thing we did, we had questions on was the Independents and how was that going to be impacted in Colorado with the new legislation on how the caucusing and the primaries are handled?
Right.
Like, we think there may be a huge influx of independent and unaffiliated voters because of that. Like, a lot of people may say, I'm going to take my Republican, you know, name off and go independent because then I can go into whichever primary I want. And at that point, that changes the game completely. So, it's, that was one of the other questions that was brought up, was how do you handle that? What's going to be the line there? And who are these judges? That was the other, that's why I did their question, because nobody could answer who those judges were going to be. And we're saying we want to take it out of the courts, but really, you're giving the power of the committee to the courts. It's like concerning. So, anyway, there's that. Yeah, I'm good with waiting until we find out those answers.
Yeah, I think I'd like to have all the information before.
And they were going to email dignity and find out, that's the, he was the former Speaker of the House, and they're going to find out for me what the answers for those were. As soon as I find out, I'll share with you guys, so.
Remember, we can weigh down any kind of a position until we get all that information? Does that sound good?
How long will you think it'll be, Andy? She said she was going to send the emails out. That would have been last Wednesday, so I'm sure we could push the matter and probably find out within a week. Before the next meeting? I would say just table it.
Yeah. Table until the next meeting?
Okay.
And then you can keep us posted and keep Peter posted.
Okay.
If we can put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
You'll be in charge. Okay.
Oh, okay, the next one's me, too.
Do you need that action actually to table?
Can we just do a consensus to table it until the next meeting?
Okay.
Everyone agrees with that? Okay. So, next one, discussion and action to authorize the AGNC Council Representative Andy Key to endorse the 2018 Technical Assistant Grant in the amount of $5,580 for the Julius Pool Garden.
And the total project's $98.74. The cash match is $42.94. We have some donations, though, within that match. Some of its materials match and cash match. So, our total is $2,214 for the town in terms of that project to complete it. And you can look at the table on the front showing the materials that are going into the project. School district is offered to not only provide some cash, but they're also going to provide one or two of their personnel to lay some of the block on the retaining wall and the planer. You can see a little chart. You turn the first page, a little chart of the corner as it might look once it's completed. There's already a sidewalk coming past there. There's a concrete path once you cross the street on that pedestrian crossing from Heathley Park over to that corner. And so, that sidewalk will connect to this little roundabout in the center here as part of the memorial. Couple of the plaques that we're proposing, bench, and then the grant write-up that'll be submitted.
The $22 is cash? Is that what it is, or is the $42.94, is that taken out, like, on labor and stuff?
Some of that is, Andy, some of that's materials, like Bud is donating, he's going to transport the boulders and set them in there, but his cost is $1,080. I'm calling that cash match, but that's part of the match. Some of it is, well, everything's associated with materials.
So, will school be, I mean, is this, not much of a plant person, but is the school going to, will this be part of their irrigation system?
We're actually going to hook up the irrigation system on the raw water system. It runs right past there.
Oh, it does?
It'll be a drip system. It's already irrigating part of that property over there at the RE4 building.
So, I was just asking, Lisa, the only thing I'm concerned with at all on this is, being a vice chair on AGNC, I will be on the review committee for the grant, so I don't know if I should be the one signing it.
I could sign it as the alternate.
And that's what I was asking her. If you, if we feel comfortable with that, I'm good. I just, I don't know if I should sign it and then review it. What's that?
You have to accuse yourself.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, like, I don't, I don't know.
I think they're just looking for a member's signature.
I can email Bonnie in the morning and double-check, but I just didn't want to stall it.
Well, if there's, you want to keep the propriety out of it, so if Lisa's the alternative, we can at least assign it because then you ski is not, it just says representative, AGNC representative.
Right.
So, we can still do that and send it in.
I can still sign.
I'm good with that?
Because I'm the, I'm the alternate.
Keeps it clean.
Keeps it clean.
Fair enough.
I'm pretty easy for them to nab. I just live...
I'll email or make sure. If she says go ahead. I guess we should prove it first, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to say yea for me.
Are there any more questions? Peter? If not, take a motion?
Red.
One more red. I already read it. Will we open this?
Does this change it for Lisa?
Yep.
So moved.
Very good motion, Andy.
You don't want me to read it again? With Lisa Hatch being the signature on it.
Representative. Okay. Trey, was that you?
Yep.
So, authorize AGNC Council Representative Lisa Hatch to endorse the 2018 Technical Assistant's Grant in the amount of $5,580. Further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Sure, go ahead.
Sorry. I just was going to tell everybody, too, one of the other things that came up at the AGNC meeting is Junction is working on becoming a, what are they, a foreign trade zone? They are in the process of doing that, and they're looking for partners in that, with what they can do there. I don't know if we're interested at this point, but it is something that can really help the region out. We're not 100% sure we're ever going to fall within the 90-mile window, but just wanted to let you guys know that was going on, too, because it's quite the tool for the region if they can get that.
Yeah, it's pretty big, Bill.
Depends on where they claim the office to be.
Okay, do we have any further business to attend to? If not, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Lisa?
Andy.
Andy? We are adjourned.